So I'd like to call the meeting to order. If you look in your blue folder, there's an updated agenda. We're supposed to have an educational focus tonight with a presentation from high school science and technology in the high school science room. So we're not going for that. That has been rescheduled for our next meeting, I believe, right? It's the number 14 meeting. So that is taken off the agenda. So we'll move on to the minutes. The first item is the approval of regular minutes of October 10th, 2018.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Matt.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Karen. Anybody saw any need for corrections? Go through those. You're not? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you, Brian. Oh, Jasmine, thank you.
Jasmine, abstaining?
Yes.
Or Brian?
Next item is the approval of non-public minutes of October 10th, 2018.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Jay. That was pretty brief. Corrections there? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. And the approval of the return to public minutes of October 10th, 2018.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Jay. And all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstaining.
Thank you. Correspondence. So I think I spoke to you earlier, Judy, you got this as well. I got a package in my mailbox from the North Country Charter Academy. They put together this really nice looking end of year report. I had a chance to look through it yesterday and today. Judy's got a couple copies.
I have two.
Yeah. So if people want to take them and look through them, take them home. Maybe we can, when you're done with them, drop them off at the SBU so that people can look through them. But it's pretty, I found some interesting information in there. And that kind of give you a better idea of what they're doing at the Charter Academy, the results they're having, what kids are doing kind of post-graduation or that. There's some pretty neat stories in there as they focus on different kids and what they've achieved. It's a very nice...
Very impressive.
Yeah, very well put together. Do you have anything to add on that, Judy?
No, I just think that they do a good job with the students. They follow them along and they really, you know, know what type of learners they are and they focus right in on it. They're really good. And they start collecting that information beginning of the year, right until the end.
It's definitely a good option for kids that need an alternative to the typical setting I have. Like professionally, I'm familiar with it and it's been really helpful to a lot of families.
Yeah, I think the one piece in there I found interesting was how much the students have excelled, you know, from when they test them out when they come in, you know, how many grade levels they've improved in certain subjects or even, I think there was some astounding percentage that are doing, you know, college level programming when they leave. So, you know, they get in that environment where they're, it's tailored more to them and to their speed or whatever speed they might be. You know, as we've had this discussion many times about the charter and how it works for us and as far as kids going there to maybe get up to a certain speed and then coming back, we've had a lot of people coming in and out. So, and it says, I think it said 14 years from the 15th year.
Yes, yeah. I think it's the longest running charter academy in the state.
Oh, good.
Oh, wow.
Because of the connections that it has with the schools in the area.
Yeah. So again, those can get passed around. People want to take them home and we can, like I said, we can send them back and forth to the SBU office. That's all I have for correspondence. Do you have anything else, Judy?
I do, but I can bring it up in my report.
Okay.
It kind of goes along with that.
All right. So we'll move on to reports. Debbie, business administrative report?
Yeah, I put in a packet of a couple things. First of all, I just put in the 2019-20 budget schedule, just some dates for you in there. We'll start meeting on the budget in December. And I also put in a financial report. It's kind of a snapshot of where we are year-to-date. And I put it in the format by major function lines as defined by the state. So there's definitions on the back of your sheet that tell you what's in each line. So like regular programs, that first line is regular education. The special programs line, the second line is special education, special ed, summer school, enrichment, that's what they call special programs. And vocational programs is obviously voc- ed and so on and so forth. So how I set up the report is I put in our budget. I put our actual expenditures to date, and to date was as of October 18th when I ran the report. Incumbrances, and I'll go through that, and then where it is versus budget, over or under at this point. Again, it's just a snapshot of where we are. Incumbrances line, I try, so anytime we have contracts that I know about, biggest being salary and benefits, all of our personnel, beginning of the year when we set up the payroll, put all their contracts and benefits in there because salary and benefits are the biggest piece of our budget. So that's that encumbrance. So what we've actually paid in payroll is in the actual column, and the encumbrance is what we have left to pay on those contracts. But it kind of gives us, so when I'm sitting there trying to figure out where we might end up at the end of the year, it helps to do some projections. So that encumbrance line, the biggest piece in there is the salaries and benefits when you look under regular ed and special ed. But also there's other contracts that I put in that I know about, like in transportation, our transportation contract, those are our food service contract, any big contracts that we have. Again, just trying to get that snapshot. If you look at our actual expenditure line, that's about, that 1.8 million is about 23% of our budget that we've actually spent to date. And we're, you know, four twelfths of the year through, 33% of the year through. You know, one expenditure that we just recently had that's actually not in there, it's in our budget because we budgeted $10,000 for bus repairs. Bus number four, we recently had to get a new transmission for the bus at $3,700. It's actually not in that actual column. It will be in the next report. It's in the budget, it's in the actual. I don't encumber things like that, but that's, you know, an actual expense that, yes, it's in the budget, but we hadn't really expected it. You know, we were hoping it wouldn't happen, but it did. So that's why we budget things like that. You know, another thing that I've noticed, so when I was looking at our actual expenses to date versus some of the budget, especially when I look at our salaries and benefits, because again, that is a big line, a big piece of our budget, about 75% of our budget. When we look at, we had a number of staffing changes from when we set the budget last year at this time. And we set the budget based on what we know as of today, over that date, versus who we ended up hiring. We had some retirements, we had some teachers leave, new ones come in. So between the salaries and benefits that were budgeted and the salary and benefits actual, we're about $40,000 more than what we had budgeted, just in changes in personnel. And again, that's why when we're talking during the budget, it's really hard to budget and make changes on an individual basis. Like we might have a teacher retiring and we know that we'll probably hire someone at a lower rate, but that teacher retiring also receives a stipend that gets put into this year's budget. Going forward, we'll probably have some savings, but you know, so it's really hard when you just budget what you know today. So again, those, about $40,000 higher than what we budgeted. Another area that we didn't budget for specifically, but we have the money in the budget, is our partner program in the elementary school. That money was budgeted for in the special programs line, in a different line item, really under what we would, out of district, if we had to send kids out of districts. So we had that money in the budget, just in a different line item. So when we look at that at the end of the year, we're pretty close to what we budgeted versus what's actually happening. So again, and, so I just tried to do, there's really no big changes from the total dollars, but just how we're spending some of that money has definitely changed. And we'll, well, you'll see more of this at the budget, time when we go through even in more detail the line items. This is more at a higher level. I did also put in other financial uses, like facility renovations and constructions. Those were our projects this summer, mainly the roof and the flooring project. The flooring project was a little bit higher than budget. It was like $102,000 when we had $100,000 in the budget. And the roof, we had, I think, $165,000 in the budget, and it ended up being about $141,000. So we have about $21,000 that will go back because those are specific warrant articles. If they're not spent, they will go directly back when we, at the end of the year. So I tried to put everything in there to date. And that's it.
Does that mean that we're, is that the projected surplus?
Well, it really isn't. Okay, because again, I...
Much less about the whole backs and the...
Yeah, because I haven't encumbered, you know, there's things like utilities I don't encumber for, but I know we're going to spend utilities. So I, I mean, if it was a perfect world, I'd encumber all of our utilities. But again, they come in monthly, we get charged monthly on those, so it's only four months of utility, you know, electricity, oil, internet charges, things like that. So, I mean, typically we'll see that line get down to about $200,000. You know, and again, this is just the expenditure side. Our revenues come in pretty close to what we project.
Any other questions, for Debbie? Thank you, Debbie. Super Ten's report, Judy.
Okay, the, just a reminder that the budget committee meeting that was scheduled for October 17th was canceled due to the fact that it was in the interim. So we did not have that meeting. We will be meeting with, now that we're coming into the budget season, Debbie and I will be meeting with the budget committee, just the committee, to update them on all of the information that you people, that the board has received, such as your, you know, your 18-19, what's this year, 17-18 budget results and what the auditors came up with. And then, again, we'll start with the new financial report. They will be getting, the budget committee gets all the financial reports you get, they only get, they get, receive them after the board has seen them. So they'll be getting the same updates. And then, so that they'll all be on the same page with all of the reports moving forward when we're going through the budget season. So we'll be doing that. Right now, we're trying to schedule that for November 7th, which isn't, we try to do it off Wednesdays, so off the week from the board. And that, that'll be that. And let's see. I did, this is another correspondence, but I'm the Hampshire School Boards Association, which you, the program's probably received. But you're going to be hearing about it out there a lot. It's the data security and privacy in schools, and this is going to run thousands of dollars. We're just not sure how much at this point in time. One of the other districts in the southern part of the state have already started the process of this, and they're up to $20,000. So no one has any idea of how much the cost is going to be. No one realizes, you know, what's going, what the need is going to be. Right now, we have the North Country Tech Directors meeting and going through what it is, what this project is going to look like. We don't have standards to go by, so we really can't say, well, it's based on this and this is what we're going to need because of that. So the, the Hampshire School Boards Association did give a summary of that, and I put in my memo that there was also going to be a workshop on November 2nd to, so you could go over this summary. However, we just got a notice today, don't bother to sign up because it's already booked. So they're going to, they're going to have to put another one, I said they're going to put another one on in December. So they'll do that. In the meantime, the things that the district is going to be focusing on and you'll be hearing about, because we have to have this, a plan, a security plan in place by June 30th of 2019. So in, as well as a list of, which we were collecting anyway, was a list of digital tools and applications all of the, just have an inventory of all the applications and the programs that we're using. That's ongoing, so that one, that component is just about all set to go. The other components, you know, are looking at how to, you know, the development or revisions of policies and procedures. We will have to wait for the Hampshire School Boards Association to move forward with that. They did have some of that in their 2018 revision policies that the policy committee will be looking at. I'm sure they'll be updating that as time goes on by June 30th. But we will have that. Five components are within that summary that the district will be moving forward with. And, you know, we're just going to do the best we can where we don't have any standards to go by. Usually the standards come first.
Right.
So...
That's not unusual in there in the technology though, for the legislature just to point and be like, you figure it out. We think it should be safer, but we don't know what that means.
They did call on, the Department of Ed did call on the US Department of Ed and their security people to come in and help them get established in the infrastructure. And there were so many components, they recommended that the state couldn't even possibly, you know, incorporate it all that, because they're talking huge, you know, and the state of Hampshire isn't equipped to do that. So they back it to the drawing board right now, so as soon as they come up with something, they will certainly let us know about that. Again, the year-end report from the North Charter Country School is passed around. And if you have any questions, you know, right now we have nine, we do nine slots a year. One time you had 10 slots a year, and we put in, usually budgeted nine. You know, in our last meeting of the executive board, they did announce that they would be looking at developing a middle school component for the 19-20 school year. So a lot of the North Country schools are having challenges and they want to bring it down to the middle school level. So they've done, been doing the research and they're ready to move forward with developing that program. You do have, in your blue folder, you do have, well, you do have it in your packet, but it's not a good meeting. I made a copy of it, put it in your blue folder. It's just on the adapt program. And remember the board, you originally, the district originally had just high school for adapt, and then it went down to the middle school, high school. And then the board financed the three through five. So what that report says, it just reviews the different programs that are offered for groups of students that need the support. And you have a full-time person, Chad Steen is the educator who provides the services for the students. Not, I just explained all the different programs that are there. And that's it.
Thanks, Judy.
Okay. Also, I just wanted to say that we would like to have, so November 14th will be the science presentation. On November 28th, that's the last meeting before your budget season begins. I'd like to see if the partner school could come in and talk.
Okay.
That'd be awesome.
And explain the program.
Yeah.
And how it works.
Yeah.
I think that would be very interesting to see. Okay, so I'll see about that. Okay, that's it.
All right, thank you. Principal's report, Scott.
Thanks. Just a, also just from Chad Steen in Adap. This week is Red Ribbon Week, which is a national campaign for alcohol, tobacco, and drug and violence prevention and awareness. It's a campaign that is going on across the United States in October. Chad is working with middle and high school advisories. They're doing two activities, one being an impact wall, where kids are given paper bricks, talking about what the impact of those topics have been on them, or what the impact may be for them or their family, if they're willing and wanting to share as a conversation starter. He's also had some other activities he's running through advisory, just encouraging folks to wear red on Friday as part of the, part of the culminating event for the campaign. Last week through our wellness committee, we had a, there was a fundraiser for Metaviber, talking about folks who are raising awareness for stage four cancers specifically. This was a, the people were encouraged to wear the colors of pink, teal, and green, which are the, you know, we tend to see pink more for specifically breast cancer awareness, but this is the teal and green for other color types of cancer awareness as well. We had accepted donations on both the elementary and high school morning and the afternoons. And over the course of the week, we raised $1,805.76. That is being donated, that is being sent in the name of one of our community members toward the Metaviber Foundation to, again, raise awareness. So I thought that was a really, really neat way to kind of put that together in a great community symbol.
Congratulations, that's pretty impressive.
It was really cool.
And to see the whole community come together for that through the school is pretty impressive.
Yeah, yeah, we had, I mean, it was, I think, you know, it was kind of culminated on, we also had, and I'll thank Tony for this, you know, he bought the, you know, we had our varsity girls and boys soccer teams wearing, you know, pink socks, and we snapped pictures and kind of put that together as a whole thing, as far as just a great kind of community event. We had people by Friday, like, you know, there was folks who were just showing up at the door, walking, dropping a check, dropping a, you know, and some didn't have any connection to the school. So it was just a neat, you know, when I talked to, you know, Kristi Morrison was an individual who kind of helped put this together in the beginning, and when I talked to her on that Monday morning, she said, what do you, would you consider it to be successful? And she said, yeah, I think if we get the $300 up, I'd be pretty happy. So obviously there's a lot more than $300. So it was really cool. Also, the, for Wellness Day activities, we had our wellness committee also put together Wellness Day activities for high school, middle school today. High school were on hiking trips around the, around the area. Middle school was on campus, participating in flag footballs and basketball, and also geocaching around the entire campus, which is really cool. We had the, there's a Halloween parade coming up for the elementary school kids. That's K through two. That'll be on next Wednesday, the 31st. And then three through five would be participating in their own activities within their classrooms. Our Veterans Day assembly will be on November 9th. That'll be at 9 o'clock. That is an annual event. That's also a really kind of unique community event that we have every single year, and you're invited to attend. Finally, we have for middle school boys and girls soccer, their season completed this past weekend with the tournament, I believe, over in April. Varsity boys have completed their season, and the varsity girls opened the playoffs. They'll be taking on Profile, the tournament tomorrow at 3:00 up in Profile. So there.
Thanks, Scott. Any questions for Scott? Moving on to committee reports. So these are the night. Brian want to give us a little rundown?
We just touched on a few of the items that are pending. Mark's going to look into some roof monitors, it's like an electronic system to monitor the snow loads on the roof. Me and Matt are talking about it as well. It's pretty neat. There's an example of what the product is right there. We have a bid for it. They're probably $1,200 a piece, roughly, $500 a year for a monitoring fee and a $500 setup fee, where you can monitor from your phone, computer, whatever.
How many would we need?
Well, Mark, right now, currently, we're estimating five, but we're going to have engineers look at it because for $1,200 a piece, for reality, it's just, they might say initially, I'm a gym roof, maybe you need four, maybe you need, you don't need one where you thought you did over here, so. But at a ballpark estimate of five, covering the zones that you currently cover, it's like $6,500 upfront, and then they're solar powered, you can move them as needed. You don't have to go on the roof in dangerous situations to measure snow. So it seems like a pretty viable option.
So currently, right now, which I didn't realize, if we want to check the snow, we go on a ladder, we go up there, and we fill buckets and weigh it. You know, come down the ladder, buckets of snow and weigh it.
I did not realize that.
So that's probably...
That's sure North Country.
That's an old...
You don't want to do that anymore?
Eight-inch snow pipe, eight-inch diameter, I mean, a stovepipe, push it down, put it down.
Yeah. You can still do it if you forget that.
So it seems like a pretty cool little thing. We just wanted to check into having somebody pick our locations, and maybe they say, look at that, maybe we need five on the high school roof and we need two located elsewhere on the property, maybe five is what it is. Cool part is you can always add it down the building, so even if you spent $65, you can buy another one, $1,200.
Is it the only issue of that school?
No, they monitor the whole roof, right?
Well, that's cool. There's, the whole roof was monitored, and now with the gym roof that was done, that has to be monitored. The gym roof is within 70%. These aren't, these are fine, these were all engineered.
Okay. This, so this whole building is fine?
Yeah. When that building was engineered originally, it was made so when the oil, when the furnace ran at 26 cents a gallon, heat went up to the ceiling, melted the snow on the roof and went back down the drains. But we've since insulated the roof, so now the snow load has changed. So now we're, instead of 32 pounds square foot, now, well, actually, 70 pounds square foot, now it's down to 32 pounds square foot, weight-wise. So we have to check it all the time.
Cool. The other stuff we talked about, we touched on flooring as a part of completing this flooring project, let's call it, of replacing most of the flooring. The last locations that are concerned is the MPR that we're in currently, the elementary main offices, and that comes in, if we went with the same product, which is one of the discussions we had, it seems to be, it's already there anyway, that Norah flooring that they're using everywhere else, you know, it's about $65,000, which is a little less than what we spent this year, and essentially closes the book on that flooring process, right?
Except for the classrooms.
Minus classrooms.
Yeah.
It's an estimated number.
All the hallways and the heavy, heavy traffic, uh...
All the heavy...
Community style ones will be...
Yeah, heavy traffic areas.
Yeah.
Having to take care of. That, this would be the last room for heavy traffic areas.
Is this the original floor?
Yeah.
Yes. Are they, is the plan to just replace it with that stuff and like, they'll make a basketball floor?
Yeah. Is that the plan?
Well, that's what we were chatting about. I mean, as an option, would you want anything, I mean, I completely got Scott because he's around it, and I mean, you're a good person.
Well, I just, no, I mean, I'm not on it, but I think that's been a discussion in the past, was to research different types of floor that could go in here and what's going to be most suitable for its needs as far as, you know, elementary kids in here. I mean, I don't know how much give that Norah flooring really has for...
This doesn't, I mean...
Oh, this is, this is much harder for them to manage.
Yeah, I mean, it's a little, it's actually dangerous.
But I think that we discussed in the past of, you know, getting the PE teachers involved with the conversation, and if there's other schools out there that we can contact that have some kind of newer flooring down that's not hardwood or Yama.
Yeah, I don't mean to draw up, but I have researched quite a bit, talked with John Francis or whatnot. They do make rubber mats, which is fairly a quarter inch thick, goes down, and you can either get them in squares or in larger sheets like the Norah, but they cut very easily. And a basketball doesn't bounce very well on them.
Yeah.
There's pros and cons to everything. They have a cord rubber floor, which is a little bit soft to the Norah, but if something happens, then you, you'll see where the problem is. You can never, you know, replace and make them look like that. It's, there's a lot of opinions. I think that the floors and the hallways and stuff like that, I understand running, but most of the head injuries you're going to see is from hitting each other, you know, head-on, two people knocking heads, not necessarily falling onto the ground. But it does happen. I just don't know what else to do other than...
So would that Norah flooring just go right on the slab that's here, or just kind of subfloor that would go in, that could be placed in between to give more give?
They, they don't.
Okay.
Okay, and I'm willing to research more on it, but I've talked with a lot of different people, and I'm open to suggestions. It just, as a for durability, you know, able to clean, being able to bounce a ball on it, cup resistant, you know, Norah was the way to go. I almost sound like a salesman, don't I? That's pretty bad.
And what's the drawback to the Norah?
Excuse me?
What's the drawback to the Norah?
It's hard.
Oh, it's hard. It's just like that.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you can bounce a ball on it, but it's sound, sound, I don't definitely know. It's got a little different sound of travels and all.
What about like that? Have you looked at any recycled roll rubber flooring?
Yes.
That comes in like three-quarter, half-inch, they use in gyms.
And that stuff cuts very easy. That's, that's the problem that they've had with the different gyms and stuff.
That cuts easy.
Excuse me?
I don't know if it's the same stuff. This stuff, you can't cut.
Well, it cuts. It cuts if you have to put equipment on it and stuff like that. They have them in weight rooms, and they also have the ones with the tiles that are almost like what you have behind the bars except they're solid, with the interlock together, that you can actually glue down, but if you had to remove them, you can remove them. But those also cut easy. You know, it really depends. Plus also a trip hazard because when you step on it, it sinks, you know, you're going to give to them.
I've got a friend with...
I don't, I use the stuff I'm talking about a little bit.
Shouldn't you ask if you had any suggestions?
The stuff I'm talking about, I use, it doesn't give at all, basically, you don't need to glue it down, it wastes it, huh?
Like the mats.
Like wood start paint.
Yeah, the mats, yeah.
No, it's not a mat, it's a floor, you roll out this room in three, three strips.
Yeah.
It's recycled, it's like, you get it in multiple colors, it's like marble, but it's heavy.
Yeah.
And you don't put it, you don't glue it down, cause the weight itself keeps it in place, I can't imagine cutting. But I'll look up that product in particular.
If you could, then great.
Yeah. Uh, okay, moving on, so we're gonna discuss flooring. Uh, science room we touched on, Stuart's, they're going, his timeline is in good shape, and that's, you know, we're going forward into the winter. So we're good. Touched on the vestibules, there was a concern, I guess, that you guys had had while it wasn't here about building a vest, was this what they were rebuilding now?
Uh, I don't know how much we want to talk about it publicly.
Yeah, with the non-public stuff.
Okay, we talked about the vestibules, the office. Fields got some pricing with an annual repair fee of thirteen thousand dollars to contract a guy to take care of both fields with about twenty, uh, two thou- twenty thousand upfront.
What is that, what is that until?
So, it's ten thousand with the front, for the infields and eighty-nine for the outfields to redo in both fields right now.
Yeah.
Get them back up to speed and then they have an annual service fee of thirteen to constantly keep them in good shape. But right now, if we act, like I had asked Mark, what they, what we're actually budgeting currently, so we budget forty-five hundred to market anyway. So for the increased amount, that takes care of fertilizing, maintaining upkeep and that seen some of the fields the guy works on. Or you mentioned the guy there or whatever.
No, no, I just, I was up at profile and saw it for a soccer game and saw.
So it sounds kind of like a lot, but apparently it's a.
Incredible shape.
It's a hands-off thing and, and you have.
They had a bid on it, you need to have the really.
Another, you pay, it's like kind of a practical member that's just taking care of it, you know, when you, when you look at it, the way I, I think it is.
So they, they.
Yeah.
After the initial.
But it's kind of, sounds like it's hands-off thing, I maintain, but.
Except to mow it.
Keep, uh, except for mow, but like, you know, patching, fixing, making the soil actually grow.
Just gonna have. A radical problem here.
Clean dirt. So it's something to think about, I'm kind of quick. Then we touched on the oil tanks, cause we run out of time. I know you guys have talked about the performance contract and that's a no-go. We, we never received anybody that's been interested in doing it, so we're kind of. So it puts us in a bad spot. Without the lights, no one wants a piece of it, so we kind of just, it's unfortunate, I feel, that we got, uh, the Johnson controls do it ahead of time, if they weren't gonna do it because of the lights, then we should have just.
Wait, I'm gonna say something.
What, the deadlines for the performance contracts to come in, like, we'll get the property.
Right.
Came away and don't show up, even the Johnson controls.
No one's interested in the project because there's not enough savings.
Not enough meat on the bone for them to make money.
Yeah.
I, the part that bothers me, I guess, is that Johnson controls kind of dragged us along.
Right.
And they clearly had known there was no meat on the bones, they would have wasted their time. So I don't know what they were trying to get out of it, maybe they still wanted us to hire them because they, you know, we can still pay them to handle a project, but at this point, it's not working for us. Uh, but it kind of leaves us in a bad spot as far as the oil tanks that we have issue with.
Right.
That we're trying to solve as well as windows and, and a number of things down the road, so currently going forward, the, the one thing we need to do now is just look at upgrading, repairing our current oil tank issue because we've expired, not expired for.
They're going to extension, the extension's going to expire.
So the cost of that project's gonna be sixty-seven. We're considering putting it as part of the budget, cause we have no choice on this, that has to be done.
Yeah.
But it's like replacing the piping, the tank's okay, it has to have a different monitoring system, let's call it. Yes. So it has to be done and then that kind of just puts us where we are at and. So it's a long time to do it back around to the oil tanks.
Yeah.
Uh, but it's unfortunate, I think we went in the right direction and we did everything we can do in, in our level of knowledge, I feel, and we kind of.
Right, we're learning something from everyone, you know.
You know?
Is there like, uh, I mean, obviously, there was no, there, there wasn't the incentive there for them to come in and say, we'll do this all for free and nobody needs to pay us, you know, like the energy service contract, but, you know, if we're gonna spend, if, if we're kicking in sixty-seven thousand dollars just to do the oil tank, is there a way to say, okay, we'll split the deal for you, we're willing to spend seventy grand on top of your savings to help this project to get us, to work for your financials?
I think what it comes down to now, I could be wrong in saying, this is, we're beyond, the oil tank would have been a product of the other project.
Yeah. Yeah, maybe that was.
But we might have. I don't want to talk over, sorry. We might have scrapped the oil tank.
What?
And moved forward with another heating system and another command system. Whereas now, we can move forward with, we could change out the heat to whatever we want and do all the project. Except it's coming out of our pocket to do it, so we can spend three hundred fifty thousand dollars, change the boiler up, put the backup system, the redundant system, put a propane tank, hook up both buildings, do all that stuff, but unfortunately, at this point, now it's our money, it's, there's no benefit and there's no long-term.
Same.
We can't get, we can't even get a long-term payout out of it, right?
It's not maintenance, it's all upgrade.
Did anyone talk to anybody or talk to at least the Johnson controls, and say, where, what's the, what's the issue and can we, is there a way for us to overcome that?
Right, how is there no?
We, we talked, you know, we went back and forth on this certain thing, in fact, that Dean, the gentleman we were working with, basically, there's just, there's no money there. The project's too small, one, for, for them, and two, when you, when you talk at a twenty-five year payback by changing out the boilers or changing this or putting the windows in, there's no return on windows, or it's like point two percent, okay? Um, the tank, we're pretty much gonna pay for the tank anyways to have it removed and go with a different system. But as they're doing it, there's just no money in it, in there for us to save money and pay them the extra money that we're gonna save. You know, so they get their chunk of change, it just, it's not there. And that, and that's basically, we, we asked about, what about solar panels, what about this, what if we don't change this part, just do this part? We went back and forth and there's nothing there, to the point where he won't even return calls now.
What?
So, you know, that's how far we went back and forth.
Yeah.
Yes, okay, so that was my question, it, it sounds like all avenues were explored.
Yeah.
So we went back to where we were three years ago, and we gotta fix the solar tank, it doesn't solve any of our problems. Mark, Mark assures me that our boiler's gonna last another fifteen years, so.
Yeah.
This one?
I guess.
I mean, I'd love to have the new system, but I'd love all.
But these were all like, all part of the plan is to build, build a more efficient system, get a better system, replace things that are antiquated. We have a furnace that's the size of one of the chains at the Hobo that was inefficient and, and now none of that's gonna be done and we're back down to this. And I'm not blaming anybody, I, I think that, I, I feel like we were let down.
I was gonna say, I think that feels the.
I, I think that they had to have do these projects, had to have some knowledge that there wasn't enough going into this and they, and they.
What about when they gave us their report?
Right, cause they started.
Why, they didn't, I mean, that was, that was their report, they didn't have a, understand them.
Unless the, the report isn't on a job right now, uh, while I understand.
Well, I feel, I feel like they were dropping hints along the way though, cause the LED lighting kept coming up and resurfacing as being an issue for the, for the project as a whole.
Well, it seemed like he didn't know that the light had been done in all the building.
Everywhere.
At that meeting we had here.
Right.
That's what I meant, that what he was sort of was learning for, for the first time, that the lights had already been done.
And there we go, yeah, yeah.
So maybe at that point, but well, why was he asking to come into a present, did he ask?
Exactly.
What was he gonna do then?
We tried to.
Come in, walk out.
I think so.
I don't know.
It, it does feel, it's weird.
Oh, I just feel pretty let down, like.
Yeah.
I, I was like, high hopes and excitement overlaid, creating something that was like, gotta be energy efficient, could like reflect well in the community. Could all this, and now we're back to.
And paid for itself.
Nineteen sixty years.
I mean, realistically, it's gonna be the same thing, we just have to be, well, we just have to be, figure out a way to get the money upfront, I mean.
We, we have to.
It's all, it's all the payback.
I guess, and that's what we're getting at, I guess, is that none of this can be done anytime soon.
Kind of planned out.
And we like taught, the amount of projects we have going forward into this year is gonna be a lot. Into next summer, which if you just set them quick, threw them out, I mean, like the vestibules, the classroom, the field project, the oil tank project. If we do the flooring, the flooring project, so we've, we're, we've got a whole lot on the plate. Already with a short period of time. Now, it doesn't mean we don't keep exploring and pushing on, we may be finding out some alternative energy solutions, cause I don't think it's gonna last forever. You know, I mean, we could, the benefit is we have a tank that's legal, so if we had to change out a burner head and you could change out the burner, or something like that. So we got one piece of the project, though.
The, the, the tanks are the piece of the project that are required.
Yeah.
So you, so you do the piece that's required and then you have time to kind of map it out on your own as far as what do you want the next five to ten?
Hey, it would be a bummer though to spend seventy grand to, to swap out the oil tank, only to find out in three years that that was a mistake. I mean, if they were talking about switching out the tank and the boilers, I thought they were talking about changing over the propane.
But we talked about it, like discussed, we'd still have to remove the tanks if that was the case, we'd pay a fee to dispose of the tanks, but it would probably cost twenty-nine or something, but.
But, but, you know, fixing or whatever and dropping seventy thousand dollars into it, only to then figure out, well, we're changing this one wrong to get it. I mean, is it possible to figure out whether or not we need to change that part before we get time? Who's, who's enforcing this now?
The, the Department of, uh, Environmental Services.
In, in what way?
State.
They defined, so they're gonna be like, you guys need to fix this.
Yeah, it is a problem, yeah.
Not much.
We just voted, it was a thousand a month, yeah.
Oh, that is a short month to buy us some stuff.
David.
I don't, I mean, all I'm saying is, all I'm saying is, number one, it's, it's unlikely to hit. It's hardly likely to know actually to force a fire against the school.
You just send them another letter soon.
Number two, if they know that we're working on it, especially.
They do.
And then number three, like, if we, if it takes us a few more months to like figure it out, I mean, the cost of three thousand dollars, it's better than dumping seventy and something that.
It's better than making, yeah, a hundred thousand dollars a state, absolutely.
I mean, when, when's the actual? I don't know, there's anyone?
Next fall, it is, uh, September two, September two thousand nineteen is now our next date.
Okay, so we have a little bit of time, but.
We told them this is our next steps, I mean, we've gone through everything we've been doing the last three years.
If we call them and say, look, we now have a plan, it's not gonna be done by September, but maybe it'll be done by November, December or January. We have contractors lined up.
We're on a grid at home.
Yeah, we, yeah, exactly.
We waste so much time.
I, I would be, it would be crazy to think they would actually try to do anything about that.
I, I think, I agree with you, I think, and what would they do, and I, I think part of the reason that we're in this position is because with all good intention, you were very short-sighted, piecemeal things to save us money along the way, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
If we do that with the oil tank and then do it again.
Right.
Right. Not that we shouldn't address it as quickly as possible, don't get me wrong, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that I don't know that we should necessarily.
Make, yeah, seven thousand dollar purchase when you wanna put more research into it, I think.
Well, do we have a, a rough estimate of cost, does facilities have, or Mark have it, as far as going with a different system, is, because we talked about, we talked about like dual fuel boiler before and we're talking about a new control system to work that, I mean, I mean, you threw around the number, just, wow, of three fifty.
Somewhere in that range.
Yeah.
For the key aspect of. Well, the whole project was more of, cause we added the windows.
Yeah, yeah.
But I think the heating end was in the range, you don't put either two seventy or three fifty, was like focused on the heating, I believe.
For here, for this building, if we were to put in a, I don't know about, all I can tell you is dual fuel, but it was a hundred fifty thousand to put in a dual fuel here, which means we still need the oil, an oil tank, propane tank, and then to put in a monitoring system as of, for the building, like what's down below and get rid of the antique, the old air system, that was another two hundred fifty thousand to have an electronic monitoring. Uh, the problems with the tanks outside is a problem, it's basically just a monitoring system that's on it and it's not a double-well pipe. Double-well pipe that comes into the building and, um, you know, there's quite a bit of work that has to go into that to fix that. It's about sixty-seven thousand dollars to do that, and it's really, you know, give direction and I'll go in, but I've been given quite a bit of different directions and I've been going this way. And we're right back to where we were started.
We are back where we started, but I think during the whole process, you quote me if I'm wrong, the goal was to find something more efficient and a better product.
Yeah, so it's not like.
Basically, every product other than the one we're trying to now incorporate is what we looked at. So is it, I mean, what does it cost to put a propane tank on the ground, put like, you know, a dual burner thing, have better efficiency, like, all these options. Basically, we, we, what we've done is come full circle back to what we were, the, the least, and I might have been wrong in this whole thing, but I was on like, kind of like looking towards finding something that was better for us, something that was burning clean, something that was more affordable. And, and I, I even made a quote before because I said, by the time we pay this one off, do you think we'll have any fossil fuel left of oil to burn? Because we kept the other one for sixty-something years and we're talking about twenty-eighty, buying two oil to heat this place. We're going right back to it and without. I understand part of it, it's kind of like, unless we just do, kind of chase things, be like, let's roll with it and see what happens and, and do more, because we're getting pressed for the sixty-seven to fix this thing, but then, everything that you were excited about, anything everybody was excited about is out the window. We're back to a couple of old units burning on it, is really what we're doing.
Right, and we have been going in.
We put new tires.
Multiple directions, but I think that it wasn't, wasn't all lost, us going down those avenues and gathering all this information and, you know, seeing other options, I mean, it's not.
I can't help but continue to think though, that this, the whole idea of this is beyond sort of the expertise of, of everybody here and it's still like somebody that, 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 that's not motivated by the potential for getting a contract to do the work, to come in and say, here's what you can do in a, in a cost efficient way, meaning that it will either pay for itself or not cost you too much, like, have, have we had somebody?
We thought Johnson controls.
And we got the report.
We, we were hoping Johnson controls, and I apologize if I can't get it, I just.
No, but that's what I'm saying, like, they're saying, they're, they have a financial interest in that, they're not a good consultant.
To get, to a design assistant, didn't we?
Didn't we get a report from?
What?
We get a report from Yetn.
We got, we got one from Yetn, which Yetn was, uh, what do you want, seventy thousand or something to engineer the place?
But he had, he addressed different options.
Yeah.
In his report.
Yeah, that, that's right, yeah, I have to dig back for that one.
So our engineer, we, we did get a report from him, we could pull that out.
I'll have to dig that up, I can have their comments.
We can reshare them.
It, it all depends on the markets too, if you're talking about cost.
He, he kind of went through all the different options and said.
That's right.
Yeah, he labeled all of them, so we can pull that out.
Yeah, so maybe we should put this on the agenda for the next meeting and gather all the information that we have, no matter what it is, how much we have and then we can kind of start looking into, whatever way we wanna go with a big decision here.
Because at this point, our options are continuing to look into something else or approve money to buy a new oil tank, fix the oil. And that just isn't like a, what anybody wants to do or even maybe after this, it's a piecemeal approach that is not really in our best interest anymore.
All right, anything else, Brian?
No, it doesn't, man.
All right. Uh, any other committees meet in the last two weeks, anybody sat down? Um, no. Um, policy, it looks like we have nothing on policy at the moment, we're pretty caught up at the moment. Uh, business, growing board action, Stuart, do you have any nominations, recommendations or reservations? None there. Flying along. New business, there's nothing on the agenda for new business, um, as we stayed last meeting, if you have something, they want it to be added to the agenda like we just discussed, so I'll come in there uh, next meeting for new business.
Like, if I wanted to ask about something right now, like I should ask to put it on the agenda, would that ever say, or say it right now?
You can ask and we can judge you.
She was in here last week, we looked at those guidelines for.
Yeah, so, well, basically, what we decided is, is, we're not, we decided, so we review the, the kind of. Yeah, the kind of standards is that, you know, the new business section is the time to maybe, if it's not on the agenda or to. Yeah, so, well, basically, what we decided is, is we're not, that we decided, so we review the, the kind of, yeah, the kind of standards, is that, you know, the new business section is the time to maybe, if there's stuff on the agenda, or to, uh, bring subjects to be on the agenda in the future. Because the thing is, if you bring something up now, and none of us are prepared to.
Right, can I say something now?
No, absolutely.
Okay, um, it is really minor, but, um, getting a new sign on the high school building, for some reason, the sign is so unwelcoming, it's metal and rusty and old and it just shows so.
You mean the lettering on the sign?
It's on the building, no, the, the metal sign that's on the high school building. Greenwood High School? Yeah.
It's just a bunch of metal letters.
Hmm, I can't remember exactly what it's like, yeah, yes, on the good building, yeah, it's just, it's like, yeah, we're Linwood, you know what I mean, like, it has no, it has no, it has no pride in it.
Should we put pride at the end?
Well, on, on that note, you know, an item that I'd like to discuss, uh, in the future, I'm not gonna be at the next meeting, um, was the, you know, maybe up, updating, upgrading the main sign outside as well. You know, now that you're seeing the electronic message boards being allowed in town, um, you know, we've always had that struggle with multiple events happening and someone having to run down during the day and put those letters up and, um.
Maybe we can tie that to you again.
Yeah, and I, and I think, um.
And we have a local sign company.
Yeah, and I think I mentioned this, uh.
Say, yeah, we're Linwood.
Yeah, I think I mentioned this to Scott recently, and you guys have already done some preliminary, uh, pricing on that, um, I mean, we could put it on a, agenda for next meeting, like I said, I will be here on the fourteenth, you can discuss it without me, but, I can't, I can't, it's been done for a while.
We could put that, not the next one, but the following one, I mean, it's not like anything's gonna happen in the next, you know, before the next budget anyway. So that you can be here for the conversation.
Yeah, I mean, I'm good either way.
About the twenty-eighth agenda, or about the twenty-eighth agenda for that one?
Sure. That's for the job.
That's good, I think.
She wants to address a little bit of that.
We, we have talked about that, both of those things at facilities, just a little bit, we've touched them, and we've talked about the potential for maybe some fundraising, um, for a new sign for out front, and those sorts of things, and the, uh, interact club, or the early, early, um, FBLA, and that sort of stuff, um, so, we've got a more robust conversation.
Do the senior class still do like a service project?
For all classes, do you think, do you mean the service?
I mean, I don't.
No, but back when we were in school, it was always like a, you have a chunk of money to do stuff that.
They, they still do that, you know, after they've, you know, fundraised for four years, and then they, they go on their trip and pay for any other expenses at the end of their graduation, whatever money's left over, they usually, you know, buy a gift back, you know, to give back to the school, and you see that kind of around the school, different things, whether it be school board, or crash labs, or different things that are donated. Okay, so, I think that's it for new business, unless anybody else has anything to add for next agenda, or if you think of something in the next week and a half, you know, email it in or let you know.
Oh. Uh, one thing that is, oh, no, that's not, it should be on continuing business, I guess, but we, we had a discussion about, uh, like, that we want to have a group discussion about some of the policies, a couple of policies related to animals.
Yeah.
Then it doesn't look like it may be seen, if you put it on another one for the next one.
It did not, yeah. Yes, there's one policy that we have that needs to be changed a bit.
But there also want to be a more, uh, a deeper conversation regarding the policies we have in place for animals on property, right?
Yeah, that's right.
It's supposed to be an addition for the ADA.
Request to put it on the.
So wanna put that on the eleven twenty-eight, because then that will allow the policy committee to look at it next week.
Right, because there's one policy that we haven't seen yet, the IMG A or.
We have, we have to add.
There's two, right, there's just.
Service animal, one's the actual on property.
Right, right, I, the IMG is animals in the classroom.
Yep.
And then the IMG A, or whatever it is, is service animals.
Yep.
There's no policy out there encompassing, you know, animals on the property itself, it's just something that was thrown into the IMG six years ago by policy committee and, I don't know.
Signs, signs.
There's plenty of signs, yes. And I don't know, you know, we can have that discussion, I don't know if there needs to be a policy really, you know, as jurisdiction for that as much as just some common sense procedures that we follow, rather than have it so black and white, because it doesn't always come out the way it should, you know, things get lost. The way it's worded now doesn't really go, anyway.
So, on the point eight for that one, that we'll look at it next.
And you don't have to give it all around me.
Well, I mean, yeah, and I think, yeah, we'll just, we'll talk about it at the policy meeting and then.
Okay, yeah, and I'll give you guys a chance to review that other policy that we don't have, but. So, continuing business, so on here we have the master schedule, uh, which we were handed, uh, I think last meeting, so everybody had a chance to look at that, and at the time, we said, you know, if you had any questions or specific concerns about it, um, because there was a lot to kind of take in, and then see how the classes break down as far as numbers go. You know, and the time has passed, you know, I, you know, looking at the schedule year to year to year to year, there's always those challenges of classes that just don't have a lot of students, because they're elective and we have a, a, a small enrollment in our high school. From what I saw on the master schedule, I was, you know, pretty satisfied with the way things have shaped up, um, and the way they may, maybe changed a little bit from summer to now, and how it's tailored to what we have and what our needs are. You know, I think just moving forward, you know, I, I think again, is that having a bigger conversation or revisiting the extended hour days, you know, as we get probably past the first semester and kind of get some real feedback on that from all parties involved. Um, but as far as the master schedule, I don't know if anybody else had any questions, uh, or concerns they want to discuss here tonight, um, the one thing I would say with that is, if you're gonna get too specific, it's probably not a conversation for public. Just, uh, you know, it's, it's easy to identify, even if you're saying, you know, this particular department, which only has two or three teachers in it, it might be a better discussion to have in non-public, um, so, would that open to anybody?
Well, suppose as a follow-up to that, we did meet with, uh, I met with our, our team leaders, our building leadership group of teachers today, and I did put that on their, on their radar, that we were gonna do, um, some kind of follow-up survey come, and we, we kind of, we are looking at the midway point, like, after this first semester.
Like January sometime?
Yeah, it's like, right in January, beginning of February, kind of once we get past the midway point, something important we'll do in February and have results for the board sometime around then.
Yeah, I think that timing was good, you know, it's, it's something new, it's a change, and it takes a while to figure out what's working and what's not. And anybody else have anything in continuing business that missed the agenda? Go to that. Uh, staff, Mrs. K?
Hello, um.
You're not ready?
I am ready, totally ready, um, this is from Dan Adams, um, the Kink Connection produced their first live show of the year last Friday. The quality of the program was vastly improved over anything we did last year, yet I see room for improvement. Community has already been supportive, the show has received over a hundred fifty views. One of our stories was about the Metaviber fundraiser, and one of the viewers said they made a donation because they saw the story on the newscast. Still working out a few of the kinks in the new, in the new equipment in order to broadcast to a local access television channel, with the recent channel shift on Spectrum, our channel is now thirteen oh one. At the moment, the total info HD service is running with news, sports, and weather. We are waiting on a few connections in order to be ready to broadcast from the gymnasium, Mr. Aldridge is working those needs and the moving of cables. He anticipates it, it'll be ready for the annual Veterans Day broadcast. And the me, in the meanwhile, we will be streaming events to our YouTube channel, the next show will be this Friday at roughly nine AM. If you subscribe to the Kink Connection on YouTube, you'll get notifications when they upload and stream live. That's from Mr. Adams.
That was pretty good, if you haven't seen it, click on it on YouTube, it's pretty understandable.
Really?
I watched it, it's hilarious.
If also, as a side note to that, and we'll thank Mr. Hood for this, uh, the kids at Channel Three were pretty excited, because Mr. Hood has Fashion Day on-air box.
I saw that.
And now hangs outside with, with, on light switch, um, I, you know, it's, it's kind of like, I think that that's probably the most exciting thing they've ever, they're broadcasting on TV, they're like, Mr. Hood, you gotta check this out. It's a delight when it says on air, so.
Technology at its best, right?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And then just one other, um, input, um, yeah, yeah, note, um, from Barb Berho, seniors Corbin Avila and Sam, Samantha Towers have been selected to perform at the All-New England Festival Chorus on Thursday, November first. They will join over two hundred talented singers from throughout New England in the forty-first Annual All-New England Choral Festival, held at Plymouth State University.
Uh, community?
Life is great.
All right, that sums it up.
Yeah.
And I don't think we have any need for non-public, unless, unless somebody had something, but. All right, so hearing none, I will take a motion for a German.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Matt.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Karen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. A pledge, attention.